It is now six o'clock PM. I will call this meeting of the Miami Township Board of Trustees to order. Will you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for our people.
Mr. Posey.
Present.
Mr. Morris.
Here.
Mr. Culp.
Here. For those of you, we have quite a large crowd today intending to speak during the public comment portion, please make sure you filled out one of the forms on the table Chief Stegelmeyer, you have the reading of casualties.
Good evening, Board. The following is the first responder casualty list for the period of March 16th through April the 5th, 2022. Deputy Sheriff Dominique Calada, Pierce County Sheriff's Department, Washington, end of watch March 16th, 2022. Police Officer Lane Burns, the Bone Tier Police Department, Missouri, end of watch March 17th, 2022. Sergeant Barbara Majors Finley, Eastland County Sheriff's Office, Texas, end of watch March 17th, 2022. Firefighter Dustin Brandhorst, Ebenezer Fire District, Missouri, end of watch March 18th, 2022. Firefighter April Partridge, Edgewater Park Volunteer Fire Department, Oklahoma, end of watch March 20th, 2022. Trooper Martin Francis Mack III, Pennsylvania State Police, Pennsylvania, end of watch March 21st, 2022. Trooper Brandon T. Siska, Pennsylvania State Police, Pennsylvania, end of watch March 21st, 2022. Police Officer Dan Rocha, Everett Police Department, Washington, end of watch March 25th, 2022. Police Officer Dominic Francis, Beluffton Police Department, Ohio, end of watch March 31st, 2022. Police Officer Trey Marshall Sutton, Henrico County Police Department, Virginia, end of watch March 31st, 2022. And finally, Deputy Constable Jennifer Chavez, Harris County Constable's Office, Precinct 7, Texas, end of watch April 2nd, 2022.
Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. We have no guests or presentations during this part of the meeting. I will make a motion that we approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is new business. We first have a motion for a liquor permit for Frost Factory Austin Landing LLC at 3633 Rigby Road. Chief Stegelmeyer.
Yes, Board, what we have is a new liquor permit for the Frost Factory Austin Landing. This is to, it's a D-5J liquor permit. It's to join the community entertainment district there, the Dora. We find no reason to contest this. They have all the information in the packet that I provided for you, and I'll entertain any questions if you have any.
Any questions? The next item is a motion for a liquor permit for HY Smokes, Inc. at 8106 Springboro Pike.
Board, this is also a new permit. This is for a C-2 permit, which is on wine and mixed beverages in original sealed containers for carryout purposes only. Again, we find no reason to contest this permit, and all the additional information is in the packet that I provided to you, and if you have any questions on this permit, I'll be glad to answer them.
Any questions? All right. The third item of new business is Resolution Number 33-2022, a resolution to approve amendments to the appropriation of funds for 2022. Mr. McCord.
Good evening, Board. This is a measure to allow us to purchase two laptop computers for the Community Development Department. They were, when we were putting together the budget appropriation for this year, we didn't realize we needed to replace a couple of computers that were aging out. So to get them the ability to remotely work and then do their job more efficiently, we're asking for an additional $5,000 to the other line from the general fund.
Any questions? We did have one guest I failed to recognize, Mr. Steve Stanley. Would you like to address the board at this time?
Well, I'm really here to talk about during the public hearing, the zoning matter that is before you, so if it's okay with you, I'll defer until then.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
We've now reached the public comments portion of the meeting. We entertain public comments from township residents and others who wish to speak on business before the board. Public comments are limited to three minutes and should not be relating to the zoning cases appearing before the board later today. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak? Please state your name and address, and remember that you have a three-minute limit that I will be keeping from up here.
My name is Robert Jensen. I reside at 6986 Rose Cliff Place in Miami Township. I've come before this board before. I'm coming for two reasons. Mr. Morris, your phone must be broken. I've left you three phone messages, and you failed to return my calls. And as a trustee, you should be able to respond to your constituents. That's not why I came here, though. I came here because I'd like to have an update from the trustees on the progress that you have made for traffic calming on Vienna Parkway. I understand that Mr. Morris told me a few months ago that he signed off on the purchase of flashing speed limousines. Is that correct, Mr. Morris? Is that your statement? Did you sign off? Did you?
This isn't really a dialogue question. You can give us your comments, and we may or may not act on them, but as to your specific question, I will tell you that we do have a preliminary report today on traffic studies and speed studies that will be discussed during the department head section of the meeting. Again, if you have comments, you can share them.
So basically, you're going to shut down the conversation. Most of these people in here are here because we are concerned about the safety of our street. The actions of this trustees and previous trustees has resulted in a significant, significant change in the atmosphere and environment in our neighborhood on Vienna Parkway. We have increased traffic volume. We have increased traffic speeds. We have multiple witnesses, not me, other people living in our neighborhood that have witnessed while they're walking their dogs and skateboarding on the sidewalks and on the streets, of people passing at high rates of speed. You know, I have to look at the Facebook page for our local neighborhood and see somebody passing probably 60 miles an hour. So what I think I'm tired of from you trustees is that you're not doing anything about it. You're studying, studying, studying. You're digging in, you're digging in, and you're not making any progress whatsoever addressing this concern. And what I've been told by Mr. Morris is that it's Mr. Culp and Mr. Posey. He can't get support from the two of you to address this concern. That it just doesn't seem to be a concern. And that's almost a quote. So at what point are you going to listen to your citizens in this township that you Would you care to answer that?
As I've indicated, the public comments section is for you to share your feelings, and we will take them under advisement.
Okay. Then I would like to speak to each one of you personally, and I would like you to return my phone calls when I call you. Because I'm a constituent, I'm a taxpayer, I support our police department and our fire department and trust and our schools, and I pay a hell of a lot of property taxes to live where I live, like most of these folks do. And for you to just shut it down is irresponsible, it is authoritarian, and it is inappropriate.
Thank you for your comments. Your time has expired.
My name's Mike Majes, and I reside at 6868 Lorian Woods Drive in Vienna Park. And I am before you this evening to address the same subject. Let me begin by acknowledging, though, that the extension of Vienna Parkway to Springboro Pike does represent for me a safer and more effective way to access and return from my personal business on Springboro Pike. It's a positive. However, there remains for the township some unfinished business, given its previous commitment to put in place calming mechanisms to address vehicular speed. If you know me, I'm not sure how many do, I'm a daily walker on Vienna Parkway and experienced repeated instances of speeders using the roadway. It's not uncommon to be literally startled by the speed of some drivers. And I have heard of frequent instances of tailgating of speed compliant drivers by folks in a hurry and the passing of drivers by other drivers on the roadway, dangerous situations which I hope we could all agree. As you know, the Parkway extension was opened almost a year ago, specifically on May 3rd, 2021. Prior to its opening, the Township Zoning Commission stipulated that calming measures must be completed and, must be completed and part of the opening of the Parkway. That condition was changed by the trustees in September 2019 and provided for a traffic study to be completed no sooner than 30 days nor later than six months after the opening of the roadway. That study was to determine what calming measures would be appropriate once the roadway was opened. While I don't know if any study was completed and shared with the community, I do know that no calming measures are visible to me. And the assurance left by the trustees in 2019 was not if, but what calming measures would be put in place.
Thank you. That's the limit of your time today.
Can I, can I just finish?
I'm sorry. We treat everybody the same way in these meetings.
Huh?
We treat everybody the same way in these meetings, and the time limit is for a reason.
Okay.
But I appreciate your comments.
I just hope calming measures will occur.
Any other presentations for the public comment period?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
First of all, good evening, trustees.
I've had the opportunity to-
Can you please state your name and your address?
My name is Doug Wales.
Thank you.
I live at 6953 Rose Cliff Place. Been a resident of the township for about 20 years. About 20 years ago, we started a process in this township to try to get calming in Vienna Park. We've gone to trustees and trustees and more trustees, and the problem still continues. It's a serious problem. Our citizens are endangered every single day. My wife was out walking our dog this week. In the morning, six o'clock in the morning, speeders going down Vienna Parkway at 50, 60 miles an hour. You can say to us, "How do you know it's that fast?" Well, if you walk enough in our neighborhood, you'll see how fast it is compared to 30. She flashed her flashlight at the guy, the car, "Please slow down. I need, I'm walking my dog." The car flashed his lights, turned around, and followed her to our house to challenge her for having audacity to flashlights and have that person slow down. It's amazing where we're at today, 20 years after the fact. I want to read into the record an email that I sent to trustee John Morris, and I'd like opportunity to continue it through if somebody could yield me time if we run out, because this points to a lot of the issues we experienced today. I wrote this to John Morris on March 10th. I'm quite concerned that the promises you and other trustees made to assure that the township would properly address speeding were hollow words. Nothing's been done. Speeding continues unabated, no speed control signs, no roundabout, no speed calming implemented. It's hard to understand why. What gives? I don't get it. Speeding is horrible, and it's tolerated, and there's very little law enforcement. Our concerned citizens are tired of the lack of the responsiveness by our elected officials. It's sad. John Morris's response back to me. I would encourage you to send this note to all elected officials, administrators in the township. I have repeatedly proposed, thank you, John, and asked for measures to be installed and received no support. Unfortunately, I cannot do it alone. My current plan is to request another study after the Riven Dale development comes online. Our most recent study was evaluated and determined that no calming measures were needed. How that conclusion was raised, I don't know. Through, though traffic volume has increased, speeding shows equal levels to that that was measured prior to opening 741. That's probably correct. It's been speeding for 20 years. I've responded to John. Thank you very much for your response. I'm surprised we haven't made any progress in 20 years. We have tried, there are just worse.
I'm sorry, that concludes your time at the moment, and while we do not provide for the yielding of time, we'd be happy to include your email as a, with the minutes of this meeting. Any other public comments? Please come up.
Good evening. My name is Peter Garland. I live at 2261 Vienna Parkway. My request is pretty specific. We have some construction coming up on Mad River Road. It will cause Mad River Road to be closed. There'll be a lot of detours. In light of that upcoming construction, I'm specifically requesting that two temporary four-way stops be installed on Vienna Parkway, one at Ensbroke in Vienna Parkway, one at Rose Cliff in Vienna Parkway. This would reduce the amount of traffic that would use Vienna Parkway as a shortcut during the period of construction, and according to Ohio road improvement policies and rules, you are allowed to install temporary four-way stops for this purpose. And I think it would also be a benefit for us to see if a four-way stop is actually going to work as a traffic calming measure. So it's kind of like you get two pluses out of one action. So that's my specific quest, and do I leave this with you?
You can give that to Mr. McCord.
Okay, great.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else in the public comment period today? I am closing the public comment period and moving on to consideration of resolutions and motions. First item on the agenda, I will move that we approve the liquor permit for Frost Factory Austin Landing LLC. Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
I will move that we approve the liquor permit for HY Smokes, Inc. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 33-2022, a resolution to approve amendments for the appropriation of funds for 2022.
I will second the motion. Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Now, moving into the public hearing portion of the meeting. The first item on the agenda is to discuss Resolution Number 34-2022, a resolution to adopt a zoning map amendment from PD-1 Planned Residential District and PD-2 Planned Office District to SP-PUD, Special Purpose Planned Unit Development District under zoning case number 45-2022. Mr. Carlson will be leading that meeting. I will be making a motion to open the public hearing for zoning case number 452-22. Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Zoning case number 452-22 is now open. The following will be the order in which this hearing will proceed. Staff will give a report, the applicant will give their presentation, all proponents will speak, all opponents will speak. A time limit of five minutes will be placed on each of the speakers. And then when you speak, please give your name and address for the record. The board will review and record the findings of fact requirements for this case. The board will close the public hearing and make a final determination on the findings of fact, and the board will make a motion on the resolution concerning this case. The board will now hear the report of staff. Mr. Carlson, have the legal requirements for this hearing been met?
Yes, sir. They have.
Would you review your report at this time?
Good evening, Board. The first zoning case before you tonight, ZC 452-22, is a request for rezoning of 9.37 acres. The land is currently zoned both PD-1 and PD-2 Planned Development Districts, and is currently used as single-family residence, but is primarily vacant wooded land. The proposed rezoning request is to rezone the land into a special purpose planned unit development district to accommodate the development of a mixed-use commercial development that would contain office, retail, restaurant, and potentially hotel use. The zoning commission heard the case March 2nd, 2022, and recommended approval with stipulations and a five-to-zero vote. I will quickly go over all of the case details, and then we'll provide the zoning commission Property itself is located on the east side of State Route 741, directly across from Austin Landing, specifically from Landing Way, just north of Austin Boulevard. The property is surrounded by two multifamily apartment complexes, Covey Run to the north and east, and Austin Springs to the east and south, and again, is zoned PD-2 and PD-1. On the right side of the screen is an image provided by the applicant. It is a rendering of the proposed development. Again, it is a proposed mixed-use commercial development that would include uses such as office, drive-thru restaurant, mixed retail, car wash. I can go further into the development details and permitted uses in a moment, but specifically wanted to frame the specifics of this rezoning application. Staff has worked with the developer, who has in turn worked with the Ohio Department of Transportation and the Montgomery County Transportation District to review this specific area on State Route 741. Currently, I'll flip over to this, there are two full-access, non-signalized access points on State Route 741. The Northern Point access is Covey Run, the Southern Point access is Austin Springs Apartments, Storage Inns of America to the south, and the future Austin Commons multifamily building to be located on the parcel just south of what would be Austin East. So as part of this request, a portion of the development would be four building paths, parcels one through four, which again, I'll discuss the uses in a moment, but also includes parcel five. This land is the, this land will be designated for the primary access to the development as well as shared access to the developments to the north and south, with the assumption that the road would be built to public roadway standards and would be dedicated to Miami Township for long-term maintenance. So part of that conversation here today, Mr. Steve Stanley with the Transportation Improvement District is here to discuss the history of this intersection and the desired improvements of the TID and ODOT, as well as the work the developer has done with them to get to this point, and what future modifications could happen. So with that being said, a major recommendation of the zoning commission and staff at this point is that the developer is still working through whether these specific uses are determined to be compatible by the community and by the trustees. So prior to establishing the full roadway costs, full maintenance responsibility, and full operational responsibility of the roadway, the applicant is seeking to determine if the rezoning is appropriate for the land use. So part of the zoning commission recommendation would be that prior to a final development plan, the applicant and the township could enter into detailed conversations about the specific cost of building this roadway, maintaining this roadway, and where responsibility starts and stops. So again, primarily, this conversation is determined whether the uses are specifically compatible in this area, additionally, what concerns the trustees may have at this stage. So with that, the Austin East Planned Development is designed to be a mixed-use development with intentional cohesive design, that is planned to provide coordinated motor vehicle and pedestrian access to Austin East while being compatible with the multifamily apartment buildings immediately surrounding that. So again, the specific uses at this time, the developer is requesting for parcel one would be a drive-thru restaurant, parcel two, a potential mixed retail office development with potential access for a hotel, parcel three would be a car wash, parcel four would be a financial institution or a bank. So again, the specifics of this modified access would tie all of these developments into Landing Way, an existing signalized access point at Austin Landing, and we could complete a four-way intersection rather than the existing three-way. In discussion with the TID, and they can discuss the particulars, the existing access points may go away entirely or could potentially become a ride-in, ride-out as needed with limited access to formalize the access points at a light rather than these sort of offset access points. In review of the plan, the zoning commission determined that the proposal is generally in line with the proposed base and subtypes recommended by the plan. The land use impact would certainly be a significant increase compared to the existing use of a single-family residential and vacant wooden land lot, but the priority of that conversation should be surrounding how that use is implemented. Corridor commercial use is certainly generally compatible with a compact residential and a regional commercial use, it's just the details of how that is done, what type of screening is implemented, and being sure that measures are put in place to separate and buffer those use types. In terms of development capacity, the majority of the existing lot is covered in trees that are very central to the lot. Staff in the zoning commission would certainly recommend that as many large existing site trees as possible be preserved as part of final development plan, and additionally, more detail will be required on final site grading. Site high to site low is quite a distance from Springboro Pike to the back of the lot. The developer has stated initially that they would be interested in developing out into sort of plateaued building pads that would potentially allow a retaining wall to be built at the back of the property that is very well screened to additionally buffer the properties. In terms of the five foundational chapters from the plan, the development is generally meeting a number of items, including adding sidewalks, potential bikeway paths to meet our health and wellness infrastructure goals. Staff feels that the project could go further to prepare and provide what kind of branding will be integrated into the development signage, unique elements. The Austin Interchange Plan, a development plan, does recognize this area as mixed-use residential potential, so it certainly is in line with our existing Austin Interchange Plan. And finally, in terms of development standards, the development standards that can be drafted for this specific plan development do not differ too much between a standard business zoning district. The primary difference is here would be that the zoning commission is recommending that some additional cohesive design be integrated, where that is not something the township is able to require in a standard business district. Every lot would be built to their own specifications. However, as part of a cohesive development plan, we would like to see how landscaping, lighting, and other things could be coordinated to make this feel like a well-designed, single plan development. So as I stated before, I won't read the entirety of the zoning commission stipulation, but it does ask that a maintenance agreement be created between the township and the private developer to encompass all public roadway, all public roadway improvements, be that landscaping or lighting, to be included in a maintenance agreement, including the construction costs, long-term maintenance costs, and operational requirements that again, would be reviewed ahead of a final development plan. And additionally, staff weighing in on the preliminary plan, things we would like to see ahead of a final development plan, should a rezoning be approved, we would like to see additional focus on site details that do advance the goals and initiatives of the plan, such as coordinated bikeways, sense of place designations, sustainability items. And also would like to focus on screening around all property lines. So with that, if you have any questions of me, I'd be happy to discuss at this time.
Any questions for Mr. Carlson? Somebody on behalf of the applicant would like to speak.
Good evening. My name is Jose Kesserhon with McGill Smith Punchin. I'm Vice President of Landscape Architecture and Planning, 3700 Park 42 Drive, Cincinnati, Ohio, 45241. Thank you for the opportunity to present this project to you. I want to thank staff and a lot of the folks that helped us navigate this project, and it's a unique piece of ground in a, in a great area, and we feel that this is going to be a successful project if it gets approved as moves forward. As a landscape architect, our goal in working with the developer and the uses that were proposed, and we wanted to create a land plan to showcase that it is a unique piece of property as it relates to access. So we want to take into consideration safety issues. We also wanted to be respectful of the neighbors, and as staff mentioned and Mr. Carlson stated it, we, we understand that we have to create a coordinated plan, not just because it's a, it's something that's required, but we think it's important for this development to have that kind of unique feel, to have some common themes, both in the architectural component, in the landscape, in the landscaping component, but also include some, some unique features about, for example, connectivity. We understand that connectivity within the uses internally is important, but also externally to the entities such as Austin Landing across the street, and also to our neighbors to the residential area. And yes, we will work with staff and, and the township concerning a potential bike connection along the rideaway, because I think, we think that's an important element as well. Knowing that we need to be good neighbors- Knowing that we need to be good neighbors, screening is going to be an important piece of the project, so we, as you can see in the site plan, we, we are proposing to maintain as much of the existed tree row, add appropriate landscaping as needed to make sure that we provide adequate screening, appropriate screening to our neighbors, but at the same time, provide connectivity for the use of those neighbors, of them, some of the facilities that we're proposing. And you can see in the lighter color, the amount of sidewalks and crossings that we have. Utilizing the roundabout is our, our way to properly provide access and allocate crossings at appropriate locations from use to use, and then direct people to the light so they can access Austin, Austin way across the road to the, to the west. So we understand that at the, at final development, we need to work on the details, both on grading, utility, stormwater issues, access. We've allocated spaces for stormwater management. We anticipate those to be wet ponds with aeration on them, both for stormwater management, but also for aesthetic purposes. We expect to coordinate signage and a lot of the architecture features as discussed before. So I will turn it over to George Flynn, who, who is a developer and has additional information, but I'll be glad to answer any questions either now or later as it relates to the design or aesthetics components of the project.
Any questions?
I have one question. I have one question. So is, is the development at this point purely speculative, or do you have some businesses contingent on already in line looking at this space?
I will let Mr. Flynn answer that question. He's better prepared to answer those questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm George Flynn. Flynn Property Group, 9378 Kemper Grove Lane, Loveland, Ohio, 45140. With me tonight is my partner, Max Davis, with Klaus Road Partners. We want to first thank the board for your time tonight, and we specifically want to thank Chris Snyder, Alex Carlson, Ron Hess, Clay McCord, and the township for their help and guidance to get us to this point. We also want to thank Crystal Corbin, Steve Stanley, and Vanessa Lotfelter with the TID for their help and guidance as well. And we want to thank Matt Kendall with ODOT and Chief Bob Pugh with the Miami Valley Fire District, who helped us in, with Jose's team in making sure that the fire department was involved and we do the right thing as far as the design. We are requesting the property be rezoned to an SP PUD in order to accommodate a bank with an ATM, a restaurant with a drive-through, and a car wash, and either a retail center or maybe even a hotel use in the, in the rear portion of the property. And to answer your question, Mr. Morris, yes, we have three of the parcels are already spoken for. They are either under letter of intent or under contract at this point. So we are, it's not really speculative, and, and given where we've taken it in the last 18 months to here, we're pretty far along, and we feel very confident it's going to be a nice-looking project.
Could you share any estimated construction value post-construction on those three parcels?
We, we did an analysis, and I'm sorry I didn't bring it with me tonight, but we did an analysis, we had it underwritten by a, a bond underwriter out of Cincinnati. I think we've shared that with Mr. McCord related to the value, and I'm sorry, I can't quote you the numbers off the top of my head. If I had to just spitball something, we're probably looking at somewhere in a neighborhood of $15 million in total, total costs, including the ground going vertical at full build-out. So it's probably in that realm. And so we also shared the underwriting with the project that's underway just to the south of us as well, from a TIF perspective. So, and, and we can continue to share information with your team as well, so. But we believe these uses are really compatible with the surrounding area. You've got a large retail component right across the street, very successful project. It sits right on State Route 741, very well-traveled roadway, and we've got apartment uses behind us, and as Jose said, we are very respectful and mindful of that, and we want to be good neighbors to those folks as well. We think that the amenities that we're bringing here are lacking in your community, and they can't find a spot in your community currently, and this is, that's why they're landing here. And so that's why we're before you tonight and trying to get these uses approved. So we, we believe this project will enhance the community and, and has a long-term commercial viability. We believe it enhances the beautification of the area by removing older abandoned structures with unkept lots and replace them with new vibrant and clean uses, along with professionally maintained landscaping. We also believe that it provides a better vehicle traffic access management plan to the area in keeping with ODOT's long-term traffic access management plan, and I think Steve's here tonight, and he will talk about that in more detail. And we believe it provides a better fire safety access for the, the apartment community to the rear. Currently, they have a, a secondary access point that runs along the property. It is, is basically grown over at this point. I don't believe a fire truck could get through there if it tried, but we were, we're going to provide better access for that, and so, and for that reason, this is actually enhancing the safety aspect of that apartment community in the rear, and provide a safer vehicle, bike and walking movement for the many residents in the area to access and cross State Route 741, and promote a walkable community with upgraded walk and bike sidewalks and crosswalks, and of course, I would say, provide additional jobs to the community as well, and property taxes. So we agree with, with Alex's report, and we agree with the zoning commission's recommendation. The only thing I will ask is, is I just need clarity on, when we're talking about a maintenance agreement, I believe this is somewhat of a public roadway, I just want to understand that, and if, and if we are to be held to maintaining that, that's fine. I just ask that the other users that are the, the south of us be, be enjoined in that agreement as well, because they're, they will be using this property, excuse me, this access point as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Stanley, and I'll be here for any questions.
I'm Steve Stanley, the former Executive Director of the Montgomery County Transportation Improvement District. I don't remember what my title is now, I'm still working, working for the TID. Crystal Corbin, who is the new director, couldn't be here tonight, she is in Washington, DC at the Dayton Development Coalition's flying. My address would be 451 West Third Street, the 10th floor of the county administration building 45422 in Dayton, Ohio. I'll give you a little bit of history here in, in connection with the project, try not to take too much time in doing that. When we, the, the TID was directly engaged, of course, in the creation, financing, construction, every element of the Austin interchange, and most of the infrastructure improvement in and around this interchange. It seems like that was a lifetime ago, but it was probably really, we only began this about 20 years ago. And included within that is the infrastructure that the township and Montgomery County and the TID all worked on to create the Austin Landing development. The TID was the principal implementer of the infrastructure improvements that allowed that project in the township to be built, and one of the tasks that we took on in that regard was to build all the roadways and to connect them to the existing public right-of-way. We, in that process, proposed in the early stages of the Austin Landing development that a traffic signal be placed, actually two of them, on State Route 741 to gain access to the Austin Landing development. And the southernmost of those two, that Landing Way, was granted to us, and that's why there's signalized access to the State Route 741 today, is due to that permit. ODOT at the time wanted to also provide signalized access to the east side of the highway, because it's long been an objective of theirs to eliminate the full movement turns in the two driveways to and from the, principally those two large apartment complexes. Right now, you can hang a left going southbound on State Route 741 into either of those two apartment complexes and out of them, which is really not a safe consideration, particularly given the amount of development we've had around here. So what ODOT tasked the Transportation Improvement District, or at least made a condition of issuing the permit to us for the Austin Landing signalized access point and the signal design that we built, was that on the day that there was the opportunity to work with the property owners and the township on the east side of 741, to tie all of those existing developments and any new development into a signalized access point, the one that we were creating with that permit, that we would be committed to doing so. Again, the purpose is to try and make sure that we have and can provide signalized left-hand turns into and out of the east side of State Route 741, south of Waldroo Park and north of Austin Boulevard. We committed to doing that, and over that, since that time, seems like a lifetime ago, there have been development proposals or individual property owners who have come forward and said, hey, ODOT told us if we wanted to get a permit to gain access to their road, you, we have to talk to you. And that's, none of them have succeeded in advancing. This proposal that you've had presented to you and that your zoning commission has considered is by far the most comprehensive and the most developed, and has the greatest chance of success of any of those that I'm familiar with, and I think I'm familiar with everyone that's occurred since we did Austin Landing. The actual design and insertion of a roundabout in the middle of this development comes from some conceptual work that some of our engineers did to say, how can we make sure that we can design a public roadway on the east side of the State Route 741 that will allow eventually all that development to tie into that signalized intersection so that we can have safe left-hand turns to and from State Route 741? And we did the work to look at the conceptual development of a roundabout there and have recently completed a traffic study that was funded by the developer, only we conducted it, to make certain that there's adequate stacking distance there in order for all of that traffic to and from the east side to fit into that intersection. And I'm glad to say that we can confirm that it's, can safely be done. So the, we have many hurdles ahead of us here. There's a lot of work that has to be done to make a financially feasible structure for the public roadway here with public and some private money, I would suspect. In addition to that, then we, we have to actually obtain some of the, the surplus right-of-way that ODOT owns on outside the limited access of State Route 741. The TID would be engaged in that, and we've already begun that process with ODOT in order to enable all of this to occur. There'll be a lot of discussions with the other property owners, but the first step is really your choice about whether or not the land use that's recommended to you by the zoning commission is one with which you agree. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have now or as time goes forward.
Any questions?
So unlike it or not, you're still seeing me talking about Austin Landing here in the future. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Stanley. The board will now hear from all proponents of the project. Anybody wishing to come forward may speak. Seeing none, the board will now hear from all opponents of the project. And just checking any neutral parties regarding the project. At this time, the Board of Trustees is required under Article 31, Section 3104 of the Miami Township Zoning Resolution to make specific findings of fact based upon the particular evidence presented at this hearing. The recording secretary shall now read each standard and call into the role to determine the finding of each trustee on the following standards. Mr. Newell?
Yep. The site will be accessible from public roads that are adequate to carry the traffic that will be imposed upon them by the proposed development standards, where only the proposed uses and development standards are to be adopted and provides pedestrian accessibility and connectivity throughout the design. Mr. Posey?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Culp?
Yes.
The proposed development and/or development standards adequately address issues related to compatibility with adjacent uses, environmental issues, and overall design compatibility, including lighting and landscaping, and do so in a manner that improves upon what would be achieved under the non-PD zoning standards. Mr. Posey?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Culp?
Yes.
The proposed development and/or development standards are intended to produce a superior design and construction than what would normally occur under the non-PD zoning standards. Mr. Posey?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Culp?
Yes.
The proposal is in accordance with the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. Mr. Posey?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Culp?
Yes.
The conditions imposed mitigate any potential significant impact associated with the proposal, including maintaining a minimum 100-foot distance from a business or manufacturing structure to a residential building outside of the planned development district, and will not cause an undue burden on public services and facilities, including but not limited to fire and police. Mr. Posey?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Culp?
Yes.
Are there any board comments in response to the previously recited standards? Hearing none, I make a motion to close the public hearing for zoning case 453 dash, excuse me, 452-22, and find that all of the above standards were met by the evidence presented at the hearing. Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
The public hearing is now closed. I will make a motion that we, excuse me, make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 34-2022, approve the zoning map amendment, and adopt the zoning commission recommendation. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
The next item on the agenda is to discuss Resolution Number 35-2022, a resolution to adopt a zoning map amendment from B4 Business District to SP PUD Special Purpose Planned Unit Development District under zoning case number 453-22. Again, we'll have Mr. Carlson be speaking, and I will make a motion to open the public hearing for zoning case number 453-22. Is there a second?
I will second in one second. Before we open this case, I just want to make a comment. The developer had asked for clarification on negotiations on maintenance on the road. The zoning commission recommendation said that the developer shall get with the administration and negotiate that, so I can't speak to what that resolution or negotiation will be at this time.
Thank you.
I will second.
Any discussion regarding opening zoning case number 453-22?
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
The following will be the order in which this hearing will proceed. Staff will give a report, the applicant will give a presentation, all proponents will speak, all opponents will speak. A time limit will be placed on each of the speakers. When coming forward to speak, please give your name and address for the record. The board will review and record the findings of fact requirements for this case. The board will then close the public hearing and make a final determination on the findings of fact, and the board will make a motion on the resolution concerning this case. The board will now hear the report of staff. Mr. Carlson, have the legal requirements for this hearing been met?
Yes, sir, they have.
Would you review your report at this time?
I'd be happy to. Thank you, board. The second and final zoning case for you tonight, ZZ453-22, is another request for a rezoning, this time of 3.46 acres, currently zoned in the B4 Business District. The current use is the Hawthorne Suites Extended Stay Hotel. The rezoning request is proposing rezoning the property into another special purpose planned development district for the purpose of utilizing the property as a multifamily residential development rather than an extended stay hotel. The zoning commission heard this case, March 2nd, 2022, recommended approval with stipulations in a five to zero vote. Again, I'll go through the case materials, and then we'll discuss the zoning commission stipulations. Hawthorne Suites property is located west of the Dayton Mall, directly east of I-75 and south of a boundary between the city of Miami'sburg. Property is owned B4, currently utilized as a extended stay hotel, surrounded primarily by other hotels, other than directly to the north is the Kettering Health Building. Here is a side view, north is the left side of this image of the property, just to give you an idea of the Hawthorne Suites property and some of the surrounding uses. Again, primarily hotel with a multi-tenant office building northeast, Kettering Health directly north, and then on the other side of 741 is the Dayton Mall. Here's some aerial images of the property. Just to give you context, they're individual buildings that house multiple units, a total 96 units on property. 96 units on property. There's an existing clubhouse that serves the hotels and is used as the check-in, checkout area for the hotel. Here's another view of the surrounding area. So as we're discussing, substance of the request of moving properties from a hotel use to a residential use, just wanted to give you a quick overview of the existing hotel market in Miami Township currently, including Hawthorne Suites. There are over 1,100 hotel units. Hawthorne Suites represents 8.4% of all hotel units in the township, leaving still over 1,000 units if Hawthorne Suites were converted to a residential use. And with that, there's actually a very substantial bulk of that is directly surrounding the Hawthorne Suites and is very centralized in this area west of the mall. To give you an idea of the request in terms of density and individual unit size, to give you a nearest approximate density, we have the Austin Park Development. They're at 21.2 dwelling units per acre. This is slightly more dense than that. And then the next most dense, in terms of higher density, would be the flats at Austin Landing, which is by far the most dense multifamily development in the township, 63 and a half dwelling units per acre. Currently, the proposal is for 72 studio units at 475 square feet. That is consistent with the R6 multifamily district, something that could be achieved under a standard zoning district. And in terms of one-bedroom units, there are 24 at 700 square feet, again above the minimum floor area per unit in a standard multifamily residential district. In terms of compatibility with the plan, the zoning commission found that the land use base layer of a commercial subtype in this case does match. A commercial, regional commercial subtype does call for the integration of residential use. In this case, the property is surrounded by neighboring commercial properties that the zoning commission is hopeful will integrate into the area and provide differing use type from the surrounding using properties. In terms of land use impact, there is no proposed modification to the existing impervious material, no new structures proposed. This could be covered here in the development capacity as well. Structural density will not change, and largely the anticipated traffic to the area will not change. Hotel use and low-rise multifamily residential are very near one another in terms of estimated traffic generation. In terms of the vision for the property, in terms of the plan and the Dayton Mall Master Plan, the Dayton Mall Master Plan, which does include this area, specifically states that a residential component could be added to the Dayton Mall Master Plan, could support the commercial uses in the area, up to 700 new dwelling units. Again, in this case, the property is being used today as extended stay hotel. Oftentimes, many folks are staying on the property for potentially many months at a time, so the applicant can speak more to that, but essentially, this, from extended stay to a multifamily is a small shift fundamentally in use type. So certainly, we feel that in terms of development capacity, land use impact generally meeting the vision, there's not a enormous leap from the B4 to the SP PUD in this purpose, in this specific instance. But with that, specific development standards could be drafted that allow this property to be used residentially with some differences from typical multifamily zoning districts. The primary question that was discussed with the zoning commission was the issue of potential parking on-site. Currently, the property has 118 existing parking spaces. If converted, based on the number of units that is studio and a one-bedroom rate, the required under our code today would be 144 parking stalls. Staff feels the justification on this, Article 43. Your typical use type for a hotel would typically include, you know, one vehicle per family or potentially no vehicles on a travel-based setting where a multifamily building has full-time residents, potentially multiple residents per building, which could generate additional cars. The applicant can speak more to this. They have similar models in other areas that they feel has not been an issue with parking, but again, I'll let the applicant discuss that in a moment. There are a number of items on-site today that in inspection of the property, staff found, has discussed with the applicant that could certainly be brought forward as part of a final development plan that could be cleaned up to bring the property to the standards of what we would approve if this were essentially a new build. One item, there certainly could be improvements in terms of how trash is stored on-site. The dumpster was sort of a loose increment with no enclosure around it. There's an existing fence line where a lot of scrub and brush has been sort of collected. It's not overly appealing. There's an existing non-conforming sign that was approved in the 1980s that no longer complies with current zoning. Most of the utilities, transformers, other electrical items are unscreened and left pretty open from the road. It's not overly appealing. Here are more mechanical units, AC units. So with that, the zoning commission discussed a number of these items with the applicant who agreed that they would accommodate a number of these items. So with that, there are five oh approval recommending, recommending approval with stipulations, first being the developer stated that they would like to utilize a market-rate housing model only. The zoning commission felt that, as that is the current request, that should be added as a stipulation to this approval. The existing pull sign will be removed from the property and future signs will conform with Article 41, and all units within development will be advertised and leased as no greater than one-bedroom units. This is in part to ensure that the parking discrepancy is kept as small as possible. One additional item I'd like to quickly touch on, if I go back to a site plan. A representative from Kettering Health was at the zoning commission meeting and asked the developer if they would be willing to include some type of fencing or otherwise, you know, landscaped screening with fencing between Kettering Health and Hawthorne Suites. There are areas where Kettering Health's parking may be actually closer to some of the units than Hawthorne Suites' own parking. The developer felt that this would be more than agreeable. Certainly would need to come forward with a final development plan if the Board chooses to approve a rezoning. And lastly, just a number of staff analysis items on the preliminary plan we would like to see more detail on with the final development plan. That would be fencing, landscaping between Vivo and Kettering Health specifically, probably the most differing use type between residential and office, utility and mechanical screening, formalized dumpster enclosure, and all required site landscaping being met as part of improvements. Additionally, we have discussed other exterior site modifications, any exterior painting of the existing buildings or modifications to clean up the appearance of the development. If you have any questions for me at this time, I'd be happy to discuss. I know an applicant, the applicant is here as well, and would be happy to speak with you as well.
Hey, Chief, I think this is the hotel that my stolen car was dumped at a couple years ago. I don't know if you guys remember that or not, but they stole it at Kestruze's, and I think they dumped it over here, some McCarthy's from Indianapolis. So we've certainly had the wrong types there for a while, and I was wondering if you could talk to the problems we've had with this property, if we have had some.
Currently, this particular piece of property is becoming one of our more high-call-volume pieces of property. Exactly what you say, we're having a lot of problems with transient traffic coming in and out of the hotels, a lot of drug activity, and a lot of stolen vehicles. We're still having that same problem, and that's ongoing today.
Any other questions for Mr. Carlson? Thank you.
Thank you, Board.
Would a representative of the applicant like to speak today?
Hi, my name is Brett Tonimoto, 373 La Perle Lane. Thank you. I'm a partner at Vivo Investment Group. We are based out of Los Angeles, and we are buying distressed hotels and converting them into higher and better uses. Since the COVID pandemic, we've purchased 20 of these hotels across the country, and essentially what we're doing is buying distressed hotels and helping the sellers and the cities turn it into something, into a higher and better use. So we have over a few thousand units across the country. We actually, last month, closed on a property in Dublin, Ohio. Similar property, it's an extended stay hotel, which lines up perfectly for a conversion to apartments. You know, the submarket that we're in right now in Miami, the Miami, Ohio, the historical occupancy for apartments is 95, 96% leased, and for hotels, it's about 50%. For a thriving hotel market, it'd be something closer to 70%. So the hotels in this market are all distressed, right? And because they're distressed, the landlords don't have enough money to be putting in these properties, and it attracts criminal activity, crime, and all that kind of stuff. And what we've been doing is going in and renovating all the units, doing background and criminal background checks, and credit checks on all of our tenants. When you have an extended stay hotel, landlords don't require any of that. They basically, with cash, pay and pay by the day or pay by the week, and they're living in these hotels like apartments. 70% of the tenants in the subject property are there, long-term tenants that are there for more than 30 days, and the reason they do that is because all of these units have kitchens. They have full kitchens in them, range, refrigerator, sinks, one-bedroom units that live and feel like a hotel, like an apartment, but they're treating them like, like their home, but they're transient. They can come in and out whenever they want, and that's what drives a lot of criminal activity in the area. Alex presented the, the market supply, you know, the, for a market this size and the type of activity that it attracts, you know, 50% occupancy is very low, and so taking off some of the hotel supply and converting it to apartments is actually beneficial to not only the city, but to the surrounding neighbors. We have letters from the, each of the neighbors that are in support of our conversion because it reduces the amount of supply, making the surrounding properties more healthy. Like I was saying before, we have about 20 of these conversions across the US, including in Dublin. This is an example of a exact same property, a Hawthorne Suites, that we're going to be converting. So this is built in 1985, so it's close to, what, 35 years old? And there hasn't been a dime dropped in this property in the last 35 years. It's, you know, falling apart. You can see the outside, paint's chipping away, all the interior of the units are all really old. What we propose to do is put in over $2 million to renovate this property, bring it up to a higher level of standard that's going to attract a tenant in the market, someone that is, one of your constituents. It'll be someone that works for the city, someone that works at a grocery store, someone that works in the community that is either having, that is getting priced out and having to commute from further away, and they're able to live and work and be a productive citizen in Miami, Ohio. This is an example of a case study that we did in, this is Vivo South Bend. It is a similar product type. It was a former extended stay hotel, similar to the subject property, nine separate buildings. You know, we came in here and added a Class A gym, see on the bottom right there. We added all the outdoor amenity areas, and on the bottom left, you can see we put in new appliances, repainted it, and basically converted it into something that is more livable, that's going to attract a tenant, that's going to be someone that's productive in, in your city. This is another example of a project that we did in Winston-Salem, North Carolina. This one was also purchased in the last two years, fully renovated in six months, and then leased up six months after that. So we had leased this to 98% within nine months, and we're stabilized by 12, my month 12. Lastly, you know, we want to be a very productive partner with the city. By us coming in and purchasing the property, we're going to be doubling the tax basis of the property. Right now, when you look at the transit-oriented taxes that a lot of hotels produce, this hotel is not really producing anything because most of the tenants that are in here are over 30 days old. Based on our research, we believe that about three or four criminal activity calls are made on-site here, and that's because of the transient nature. But when you get full-time residents in the site, those calls go a lot, go down a lot because you've got, you know, members of, of the city that are like long-term and planting roots. We're going to be putting over $2 million of capital improvement into the site. That's going to, you know, make this property less of an eyesore, and it's going to attract the right tenants. You know, like I was saying before, the, the long-term, the, bringing long-term tenants to the city in this property is going to, you know, provide more job, or they're going to be citizens, or are going to be paying taxes, working in the area, and not attract the, or transients that attract criminal activity like stolen cars and drugs and that kind of stuff. All five of the neighbors that surround the property are in support of this. We have the, the letters, and I think Alex, you, you have received the letters, I don't know if you've distributed them, but the neighbors all support the project, and, you know, really want to, you know, be a good partner of the city, and, you know, we pride ourselves on our reputation. Like I said before, we've purchased close to 20 properties across the US, and we have a pipeline of eight more. So we, we want to come, come to you guys and, and see if you have any questions, and, you know, see where we can work together on this.
Any questions?
Just a quick common recommendation, as you tour the country and give these presentations, make sure you pronounce the name of the city or township that you're in appropriately. This is Miami Township, we're not a city. So, thank you.
There it is.
Thank you very much. The Board will now hear from all proponents of the project. The Board will now hear from all opponents of the project.
Again, my name is Peter Garland, 2261 Deanna Parkway. The only opposition I have to this project is what we're going to do with the people that are currently there. I'm familiar with the project they did in, I guess it was Greensboro, South Carolina, and it created a little bit of an issue. While Vivo's a great company, they produce a good product, once they move into town, people that are in the hotel have to have someplace to go, and it's often not where you want them to go. So I think it's important that that be considered in any kind of vote or plan that we make as a township. That's it.
Thank you. Any other opponents? Any neutral parties? At this time, the Board of Trustees is required under Article 31, Section 3104 of the Miami Township Zoning Resolution to make specific findings of fact based upon particular evidence presented at this hearing. The recording secretary shall now read each standard and call the role to determine the finding of each trustee on the following standards. Mr. Newell.
"The site will be accessible from public roads that are adequate to carry the traffic that will be imposed upon them by the proposed development standards, where only the proposed uses and development standards are to be adopted and provides for pedestrian accessibility and connectivity throughout the design." Mr. Posey.
Yes.
Mr. Morris.
Yes.
Mr. Culp.
Yes.
"The proposed development and/or development standards adequately address issues related to compatibility with adjacent uses, environmental issues, and overall design compatibility, including lighting and landscaping, and do so in a manner that improves upon what would be achieved under the non-PD zoning standards." Mr. Posey.
Yes.
Mr. Morris.
Yes.
Mr. Culp.
Yes.
"The proposed development and/or development standards are intended to produce a superior design and construction than what would normally occur under the non-PD zoning standards." Mr. Posey.
Yes.
Mr. Morris.
Yes.
Mr. Culp.
Yes.
"The proposal is in accordance with the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan." Mr. Posey.
Yes.
Mr. Morris.
Yes.
Mr. Culp.
Yes.
"The conditions imposed mitigate any potential significant impacts associated with the proposal, including maintaining a minimum 100-foot distance from a business or manufacturing structure to a residential building outside of the planned development district, and will not cause an undue burden on public services and facilities, including but not limited to fire and police protection." Mr. Posey.
Yes.
Mr. Morris.
Yes.
Mr. Culp.
Yes.
Is there any desire of the Board of Trustees to provide comments in response to these factual findings? Hearing none, I move to close the public hearing for zoning case number 453-22, and find that all of the above standards were met by the evidence presented in the public hearing. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Yes.
Mr. Morris.
Yes.
Mr. Culp.
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 35-2022, a resolution to adopt a zoning map amendment from B4 Business District to SP PUD Special Purpose Planned Unit Development District under zoning case number 453-22, and that therefore be it resolved, the Miami Township Board of Trustees adopts the zoning map amendment and adopts the zoning commission's recommenda, approves the zoning map amendment and adopts the zoning commission recommendation. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I would just echo Mr. Culp's comments. In my ride around with our, members of our police force, they commented about the frequent calls to this property, and I do share Mr. Garland's concerns that these folks staying at these places will find other places. Unfortunately, we have other places that they can go to that have capacity at this time, so we might just be shifting a problem, but we will be taking and creating, I think, one less problem property if we approve this.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Yes.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
We're now in Department head's comments. Chief Stegelmeyer.
Thank you, again. I'd like to take a moment, and I'll be brief, if I can, for a minute to thank the people from Deanna Parkway for showing up. Your concerns have resonated through the police department, it has Your concerns have resonated through the police department, it has been since I've been the chief here. I think it's important that we work together to try to find some resolve to the issues that you're experiencing. I really do. I don't want you to think that your concerns fall on deaf ears as far as this board or this township police department is concerned. What I would like to do is just point out a couple of things that we have been doing interim to try to find some solutions to your problems. First of all, back in 2000, before the extension was opened, we had purchased by the police department one of the portable speed signs, and I'm sure I've seen some of you out in the neighborhood, as I've been erecting those signs up myself throughout the day. Those speed, that speed sign helped give us a baseline data of some of the traffic that you were experiencing prior to the extension. Since then, since day one after the extension opened, this board supported our venture and actually authorized and purchased for the police department two additional speed signs. The speed signs that you have seen as late as last week flashing in your neighborhood helped reduce and calm traffic. What we're trying to accomplish with this is to collect accurate data, not just data, accurate data that we can formulate a good formulation plan to get a good calming device and a good plan so we can try to calm some of the traffic in your area. From the police department standpoint, you've also noticed, as much as I can, a car sit in the neighborhood and run a little bit of traffic enforcement. While I can't give you an officer 24/7 because we have a high call volume, but we do try to pay as much attention in that area as we can. I just, it was very important, I took a moment to let you know, your concerns are heard by this board, by myself, and we are taking action. While it's not moving quick, in 20 years is a long time. Make no mistake, I'm in your corner, but as your police chief, we are looking every way possible that we can legally and profitably solve this issue for you. And I'm open to concerns. Feel free to stop by my office and talk to me anytime, and I will listen to whatever advice that you may have, and if it's something that we can feasibly look at, I'll be glad to try that. But this board does support the calming efforts up there. Like I said, they've invested money in these signs so that I can keep going on with my data, and here, hopefully, within the next meeting or so, I will have some type of formulation of a plan that we can start using to help your issues in this area. I just wanted to let you know that we do hear you, and thank you for listening, and thank you for coming.
We're not taking any more public comments today. You're free to, you're free to follow up with the chief individually. Mr. Mayberry, any comment, any report? Mr. McCord?
Good evening, board. Just a real quick update on our efforts with the changing with federal funds and the American Rescue Plan efforts. We intend to come back with a series of appropriation adjustments as those plans are finalized, and I know we had it on the work study for tonight, but with the ARC being pushed back, we're going to do the same thing and just bring those back as they are applicable for changes on the appropriation.
Thank you. Mr. House, anything?
Yes, sir.
All right. Elected official comments. Mr. Newell?
I have none.
Mr. Culp?
I have none.
Mr. Morris?
Yeah, I would just like to also thank the residents for coming out today. I thought the idea on the temporary four-way stops for potential traffic increases when they shut down the traffic at Mad River and Alex Bell, that that traffic will be routed up Munga Road, but as we all know, some people are going to take Vienna Parkway as well, and I think the temporary four-way stops is a great idea, so I'll, I'll look to see if we can get that done. I support investment in traffic calming. I think it's a good permanent investment. I think we've made a good first step in getting some temporary measures to gather data, and as government officials, we have to be good stewards of the township's money, so we can't just invest in things without making sure they're good investments. But I think there is enough traffic issues all across the township, not just Vienna Parkway. We've got issues on Owen Dale and Lamb Road and out west on the west side, people flying down Jamaica Run. There's need for traffic calming everywhere. Unfortunately, we live in a society that we like our cars and we like to drive fast, so I will continue to advocate for permanent installation of traffic calming measures. I was in Mason this morning, and I noticed on Waterstone Court in Mason, just north of Fields Erdel, they had some, basically, they had taken their 25 mile-an-hour existing sign and basically put a flashing LED light all around it on a solar pattern. So something like that could be a less expensive investment than some of the things that we've been looking at, but I think they all work. Thank you.
Thank you. I do appreciate all of you being here today and sharing your opinions and thoughts. I know that this is an important issue for you, and as the chief iterated, it's not one that's not being worked. We are working on it. We have no executive session today. I will adjourn the meeting at 7:15.